August 24th, Town Council Board Commission. Welcome everyone. We have quite an agenda today. First thing is to approve our agenda. I think we have an addition to our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we add to revisit the resolution in support of our county libraries.
Got a motion or have any discussion? I'll paper it out. I'll close my life sign and the motion carries. So we'll add, that is one out of eighteen. Now I would, any kind of motion that would approve the agenda?
That motion?
Have a motion. Do we have any discussion? I'll paper it out. I vote for lifetime, motion carries. Also, any kind of motion that would approve the consent agenda? Motion, do we have any discussion? I'll paper it out.
Aye.
Close my life sign and motion carries. I understand we don't have anyone signed up for public commons, is that correct? Her final report says the mayor's report. What was going to tell? Let her go. They're coming to visit our town and, and being able to put in a plug for community care program, but that made front page at Silver Hill, so I'm sure everybody knows about that. So, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the, the logo for Pinnacle Park. And I understand we're still waiting on a presentation from the Pinnacle Park Board, so wait for that. So, moving on to our commissioner, Commissioner.
I just want to, uh, express my gratitude that ten people have put their names down to sit up here this November. That's the most folks I've ever seen put their name in for an election and I'm thrilled that there's folks in this community that want to serve in this capacity. I see some of you out in the audience and I'm thrilled that you've put your name in here. Taking time away from your primary jobs, from your family, and putting effort into local service is, it's important. It's hard at times, it's very important. There's so many issues out there that need attention. And I'm failing right now and I apologize for that. It's hard to do everything for everyone all the time. So as you enter, um, enter into politics, um, knowing it's going to pull you in every direction. I'm so grateful you're there though, and I'm grateful, um, to be a voice for you as you make this decision in your election. I want to support you, um, and congratulate you. That's all. Thanks.
Good. Yes. For your report, I believe.
Uh, just wanted to mention, I see a lot of firemen out there today. Thank you guys for being here. I was able to kind of go do a little ride along, hang out with them last night. See a lot of the good things that our fire department is doing, so I commend you guys. There's also, you know, just mentioned, there's, there's some needs there and just to kind of keep putting that before our board that, you know, we have aging trucks and we got a new bumper truck coming. Ladder needs to be fixed, things like that. So, um, that is on our radar and, and we want to be there for you guys. All that covered. How are you guys doing? Great job as you have been. We appreciate your work for our town, big town.
Alright, so moving on to your manager's report.
Um, as far as an employment update, I wanted to let you know James Blasing started with the fire department July the fourteenth. So we want to welcome him to full-time status. Uh, for Pinnacle Park, the recreation trails program grant has been completed. We're now working up with, uh, contracting a grant administrator to handle the bidding process and oversee the construction to build that 1.9 mile loop. We will also need to get the trail location approved from North Carolina Land and Water before the work can begin. So we'll be working on that. And Jake will give you the Bryson Park update. The mastars for the traffic lights downtown have been primed, um, so painting will occur soon. And then we still have the request for qual- qualifications for the engineer for the Scotts Creek project out here. It's open until August the fifteenth noon, so hopefully this round will receive some interest. That's all I have.
Thank you. Good work.
Morning everyone. Little surface slide on Allen Street has been repaired. I don't know if you've been by, see that, but excavated four foot benches and backfilled that with about a hundred and thirty tons of do about number two river out. I'm hoping that stabilization bits, uh, right there. That was on a recommendation of some geotechnical engineers and a local engineer in the park that did that work. Did it really efficiently and got us, moved us up in lines. We appreciate that. Um, I hope you've all seen the peace call by now. I'd like to thank Rotary Club for putting all that together. It looks really nice out there in front of our public library, our public restroom, excuse me. Uh, we have received a few inquiries on the RFQ for our Scotts Creek repaying the wall project. So after, after passing one time and having zero interest, that's encouraging. We keep you all up there. Like Paige said, that's open until August the fifteenth. Two, two thousand twenty-five powell certified statement and report has been submitted. That's for our, our town on streets. We've received a contract due for the Mill Street Lights finally. Hopefully those will match the main street lights in the next several weeks. I'll be submitting a twenty-four, twenty-five local government solid waste material report next week. That's due every August. And, uh, that subtracts the amount of solid waste, garbage recycling, the trash mail, uh, brush we pick up. One more duty, it's a point three hundred and fifty and four hundred tons annually on that stuff. New garbage truck is expected in the next month or so and it at least hasn't been ordered. Anytime on that one's still kind of TBD, but I'd like to thank the board again for getting us those valuable tools to help us, uh, maintain our services. Fourth of July celebration at Bridge Park was very successful and I'd also like to thank everybody that had a hand in helping put that on. I also like to welcome Tim Oval, who's our maintenance technician. Been with us about two weeks now and he's doing great so far. Any questions?
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Bridge Park. Right over here. Morning everybody. So, um, start off with staffing. We, uh, just recently hired Taren Brown from, uh, she's coming to us from the sheriff's office. Tell him he's got to step in here. He's packed back anyway. This is Taren, everybody. Uh, he with the sheriff's office for nearly five years. Worked different, different jobs there. Uh, he is, you guys hear me talk all the time about hiring the right people for, for our department and Taren's definitely that guy. So, uh, we've been, been at vacancies for a little while now. We still have one vacancy left, but, uh, but Taren's going to fill one this week. So, thank you, Taren.
Well, it was important.
Guys have to figure. So, um, and I don't think you want to harm us. Um, so we still have that one position available. Uh, we are, just as a department, we are, uh, almost fully staffed. We have one department, one vacancy, but, but this is the time of year where our officers want to take vacations to be with their families, just like everybody else. And there's training and then this is also our busiest time of the year. So, uh, so we're running a little short staff trying to get, take care of our employees, make sure everything's that, giving them the things that they need to. Uh, events wise, the fourth of July went, went great. We've had three sort of rally protest events since my last report, which was about, we skipped to the last meeting, so it's been about sixty days. Uh, those went just fine. No problems there either. Lots of events in our town this time of year. Everybody knows that. Been able to get, gain some ground. Uh, Taren's really helpful with that, filling this position with some, with some training that needed to get done. Uh, but because of staffing, we had to kind of hold it off. Um, we're taking, Silopedia's been called to take sort of a leadership role in our region, uh, on something that, that we've talked, CIT or Crisis Intervention Training, is where it's a kind of a mindset of, uh, trying to get our police officers to stop having to respond to non-criminal mental health calls. Uh, because we are the right people for that job, but we are the only ones that get it. So, uh, there's some efforts in our county to try to, try to get mental health more involved in that and bring our law enforcement back away from it. So, uh, because of our community care program, that we, we sort of the resident folks, people are looking to, to say, how should we form this? How should we do it? So we've been doing a lot of work on that. Um, yeah, so just recently an increase in social issues and the, the things that the community care program exists for, we're seeing, uh, lots of you, you folks have probably noticed lots of new people that you haven't seen before around. Uh, we, in the last probably sixty days, we've got a real influx of that. That's not, that's not, that's not abnormal for summertime for us. But, uh, but Galadra, our community care workers do a really good job of, there would be many more, uh, but she's doing a good job of ham on that, but we've still got a few more. I had a couple of calls with some people in this room about a couple of people in particular that people are concerned about. You're working with that people trying to get there, so. It's, the thing I would remind everybody is when you see those folks, if, that they're not committing crime, you think they are, but they're not. And so that's what we do. It's crime. And so it's tricky for us. Just, just, just to go start getting involved with somebody that aren't doing the illegal thing. Anyway, uh, and the thing, and sometimes if they are committing a crime, it's something so mild that our jails, we don't hold people in jail. We're walking in the road. Sorry. We just don't. Uh, and so we can take them up there, they're going to get right back out. So that's why the community care program is important because they're going to get, that gives us other avenues to take care of those problems that, that don't use jail. So, anyway, um, the Axon Body Cameras, the new body camera system that, uh, the board funded for us this year, that we got those in there. They are in, uh, in use now. For us and our business, that body cam, that's a total game changer for us. It's such a big deal. Not only have we got reliable and a good product, uh, we need something to be reported, which is about everything we do. It's also really, really good for our, I think, uh, the officers are back there. I think they'll tell you, everybody's very excited to have quality equipment that they rely on. When, when I, I've been doing this a long time, when we first got body cameras, all the, all the officers were, I don't want to wear a camera. Who wants to wear a camera all day, every day and record everything you do and say, nobody. But now, that now things have changed. So now officers, they, they don't, they don't, they get very upset if their cameras. So, uh, so anyway, so thank you for that. Um, we've been, uh, also dealing, we've been talking a lot with some of our Latino folks, uh, leadership there. There's a lot of, a lot of questions for law enforcement right now, a lot of fear in the community. So we've been trying to answer all the questions we can for that. Lots, lots of conversations with those folks, so. Uh, talk about community care real quick. As a leader here in Silva, as the police department's leader, I can't tell you how important it is and how grateful we are that we now have that position secured and it's not just dangling in, in, in space, wait on grant to be renewed maybe or maybe not. And I think probably a good thing. Uh, so heartfelt, thank you for that. Uh, that, that is something your police department needed and, uh, and we're able to work it out and that's amazing. Uh, that's very, very important. And then, uh, and a thank you to, to Mayor Phillips, because he's been very, very vocal and I don't know, I haven't read the paper yet, but I know. So, uh, thank you for that because like I said, you, when you start looking at, uh, at the police department's needs, I believe. So this, this is crucial. So, so thank you. I know, not, not always easy to me saying that this happened. It was very. Like I said, we've seen a surge. We're working on those things. We've got a few people, when you start dealing with human beings, it's not always easy. Uh, especially some of these folks, they've got some real challenges. They've all got stories. And, uh, it can be, it can be tricky, but I am watching police departments all over the state and the country and they, the police don't have a good answer for the properties that we're talking about, because they're social problems. Uh, this is really the only program that I know of that will help the police deal with social issues. So, and what we're working on with the CIT thing is trying to put some of that social issues back on, back on the community, back on mental health, back on housing, back on, you know, those are the people that should be dealing with those. So, we're working on that. Um, we've been busy, uh, we, with community care, it gets a lot of attention. We filmed a W, uh, WLOS Carolina Spotlight on the TV show. We got several. Long time. That program is growing. It's spreading into other police departments. We have eight now that are following our model and there's ten more asking or more. Because it works is why. So it's, it's very helpful. We're going to be, I don't know if I've told you this or not, we're going to be presenting an international association chiefs of police in Denver, uh, in a month or so, or a couple of months maybe, but, um, there'll be police leaders there from Zimbabwe. I mean, there'll be this international conference. We're presenting Silva, Silva PD. That's pretty exciting. Uh, I, I sort of think about them, I don't know, we're going to tell them, but, you know, globally, but, but they'll literally be interpreters in the room. I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty cool conversation for us. But, so just a real quick report on what she's been doing, uh, since my last report, she's been attached to a hundred and thirty CAD calls where she's out doing her work and, and sometimes corresponding, sometimes doing things on. That's in sixty days. She's got about sixteen, I told you we had a little surge. She's had like sixteen new clients since my last one that she's working with. And she's got about six of them that sort of carry over, people that are taking just long-term support to get them off of I-Rate. Or the goal of our program is to keep these folks from be, be continuously having the police called on for non-criminal issues. So we don't have to deal with these thugs for stuff that's not, not law. Anyway, and I'll say real quick, and then I'm done, is a big thank you to Eric's office and, uh, and Jeff. We've had, we've been working together more lately than ever and, uh, I don't know if that's good or bad, but it's what it is. Uh, Jeff's been a big help and Eric's staff was a huge help and, uh, he helped us do some things that absolutely changed, uh, a man's life. And I won't actually be on Facebook today, but, uh, this guy was sleeping on our bench in front of the police department because it's the only place he felt safe. Check Facebook tonight and you'll see the story. It's, it's a really good story, but we were getting called on him. He wasn't doing anything illegal. Uh, he didn't have anywhere else to go, but because of Eric's staff, your staff's help, uh, we were able to do a couple, a couple of little legal things to help him. And now the doors are open and he's, he's housed and got his own thing and we don't, we're going to call on him any year. Anyway, real good stuff. So, any questions for me?
Thank you for what you did.
Right. Move on to our fire department.
Good morning. I don't have a lot to talk about. Favorite thing in nine eight dollars? One thing going on, I was about to add, getting fired. This year, they've been very tired. They've got a hard folder, really, really tired. Yeah, probably next month, so. I, um, I haven't talked about this one.
Can you say that number again? Did you say nine hundred and?
Eight ninety.
Eight ninety.
Well, see, but you're out here already.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you did.
Thanks.
Alright, we have a mainstream report. Did I get it?
Yes, we did. Good morning. Um, last week I attended the Blue Ridge Rising Conference in Roanoke as a Gateway Community Board member. So Silva is a gateway community to the Blue Ridge Parkway. And after three years of community input, the plan is finalized and funded. So we're really excited to learn about the things that we can do to improve wayfinding to get people off the Parkway into downtown Silva, uh, into Silva at large. And entice, uh, the travelers to visit all the other Gateway towns with some, uh, signage, dark sky designations and other programming. So there'll be more to come that I'll be reporting. Um, yesterday you might've seen some middle schoolers walking around downtown in green t-shirts. That was the youth entrepreneurship camp from SEC. Um, they came downtown. They have an entrepreneurial business project that they're working on for the summer. And they got to go in and meet the different, uh, merchants to see what they do and how they do it. And it was really, really a great time for them. I think I'm attending the basic economic development training at the School of Government in Chapel Hill, so I'm excited to learn more than I can apply to my role in the town. Um, you'll see that you have a, a report, economic impact report from Western Carolina University. There on your desk, uh, feel free to, to give that, uh, a look. It's, it's more about their role in creating jobs and attracting visitors and spending in our community. So they are a great partner, um, and we appreciate that with them, all they add to our community. And then finally, next weekend, August first through the third, you're going to see around four hundred cyclists in Silva. Um, Cycle NC, uh, chose Silva to be the, the location for the mountain ride. So they'll be leaving from Bridge Park every day and coming back to do various routes. It won't be group starts, so there's not going to be a lot of people all at one time. But, um, we'd like to, to encourage the public just to be watchful because they'll be out there, but they are savvy. They do this on a regular basis and they know all the safety rules and regulations. So, um, we're really excited because it's going to be great to have in August, you know, this many people downtown and spending money in the shops and restaurants. Does anyone have any questions?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, do we have a report summer planning?
We do not. They typically don't meet June and July.
What about Wassa?
Uh, yes, you may have sent the water conservation notice in the newspaper. Um, so the water treatment plant is running at a lower capacity, so users just need to be aware to conserve water when possible. Um, also Twasa and Western are exploring an interconnect for a line that would allow them to distribute water to each other. Um, that's all I have.
And we have a report for Pinnacle Park.
The only thing I didn't mention in my manager's report is we're still waiting to hear on the part of Grant.
That moves us on to new business. And first thing is a, a joyous occasion to give the volunteer of the year award. This year it goes to our, our chief. I've been for thirty years as our fire chief, which is very, very rare. I could come forward. Big love. You're telling another guy forward, Mr. Brian Tyler. Um, with the state fire marshals office, that's presentation from I could with.
No, okay. Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to join you today. So, recognized chief. Uh, chief, I understand you have forty years of service, thirty years of fire chief, which is remarkable today. You've seen a lot of things over the years. And, um, you know, honestly, I mean, from the days of no, no air packs, very little turnout gear to our trucks being manually operated to, to electronics that keep them in the shop most of the time. But, uh, truly, you know, it's important today, talk about public service. I've always said we're a very military-rich state and I travel the state and talk to folks and say that if you can't serve your country, support it, serve your community. Uh, but that was mentioned today, but I'm going to approach him. The fire service, you know, serving your community is important. Firefighters here each and every day see people at their darkest hour. Uh, and, and we appreciate the service, Donald, and then your leadership leading this great town to the next, next century. So, uh, on behalf of state North Carolina and all the state fire marshal, I present you a lifetime achievement award. Knowing I didn't bring my glasses, I'll lift my arm long without any, but, but this prestigious award presented in recognition of the distinguished career marked by unwavering commitment to public safety and the history and significant contribution to firefighting professionalism. The Office State Fire Marshal Lifetime Achievement Award is presented to, with deep appreciation to Michael Beck. There was a few more things there, but I'll, I'll let you read that. Uh, stubbing, striding my eye. We do a total of appreciation, um, for in there. Generally have a valor coin. I don't have one with me. This worked out great when they did the application for me to come do this. I've been at Cherokee all week at the Hillard Inspector's Association meeting, so. My wife is with me and she's my P I every day, so I send everybody else back to Raleigh so they can go to work. Listen, get a picture here.
We get one if you and your family, um, Eric. Okay, one, two, three. Yes, thank you.
Head of circle. Thanks guys.
Hey, if you let move this on the line on thirteen, then the historic preservation commission update.
Morning, those mayor commissioners. Uh, my name is Mike Post. I'm Jackson County planning director and it's a pleasure to be here today. Give you an update of what's going on with Historic Preservation Commission. Been, uh, more than a few years since we've come to update the, uh, town of Silva and the work of the commission. And for those that aren't familiar with what the commission does, in two thousand nine, Jackson County, along with the four municipalities, created a joint historic preservation commission with the, with the, uh, with the hope that we can, uh, continue to educate, promote and, uh, and preserve our history through our landmarks and our, uh, and, and our, uh, significant buildings and, uh, residents throughout the county. Uh, the program is set up through the state of North Carolina through general statute and, um, you can be nominated by the board or, or an application can be presented by, by a property owner, building owner or homeowner uh, to include their structure, uh, or their house or business in this store, uh, in the local landmark program. To qualify for that, your, uh, structure has to be at least fifty years old. And it has to be of, uh, or have architectural significance. So, um, a fifty-year-old cinder block storage building probably doesn't fit the, the definition of his, as, as being historically significant. But you have a lot of great examples. For instance, the Hoover House here locally, which is a designated place. And, and your downtown has some historic buildings as well that could follow by with the program. If you choose to, uh, it, once the application has been reviewed, the commission, uh, or received, the commission reviews the application along with the state historic preservation office for consistency with the, with the program guidelines. And then it goes to the, uh, appropriate, uh, governing board for approval into the program. So if the application was received from a, uh, uh, from a building inside of the city, one of the town silver, this board would be the board that determined whether or not it gets accepted into the local, uh, uh, program and the reservation program. The reason why that's significant is because in addition to, uh, inclusion, one of the benefits that property under can receive is reduction in the property tax value. Uh, property, it's a tax deferment program. Yeah, very similar, if you're familiar with the present value or present use value program with, uh, farmland. It's a very similar program, uh, that allows for them to apply to the tax office for reduction in their taxable value. So that, now in return, if you choose to do work to your, your structure, um, that has to be in accordance with the Department of Interior's guideline, the US Department of Interior's guidelines for how you, uh, improve and, and maintain historic structures. And that's monitored by the historic preservation commission through what we call certificate appropriateness. So if you have to replace a roof or you, when you play, replace all the windows in your historic structure and, and you are a part of the program, you have to go through the approval process, which is held by the, uh, historic preservation commission. That commission is a joint commission. Town silver does appoint, uh, a member to that commission, um, and as well as the other, uh, four jurisdictions. Uh, to date, uh, we've had three locally designated, uh, uh, structures, the Hoover House, the, uh, Western, uh, United Methodist Church and, uh, the Morcai Zachary House, Dan Cash. Orkai Zachary House, the Cashers, which sits on the property of the Cashers Historical Society. Uh in addition to the preservation program, the commission also does a lot of education work. So we uh we attend Mountain Heritage Day regularly to to talk about historic preservation. We work with the uh with the Avalanche and Woods Museum. We were at the area of quilts this year to uh not only to to support the work that they do there at the Avalanche and Woods Museum, but also to inform folks about preservation in general. Part of the work that we're doing is also modernizing our our historic preservation ordinance to match existing uh uh or more of recent amendments to this state's general statute. Most of that has to do with the changing of 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 some uh statute references. Uh most of the information, uh the ordinance stays the same with the exception of a few uh uh amendments. And we clarified uh in that document that uh the local design standards, in fact, are the design standards of the Department of Interior for consistencies uh say across uh all of our preservation programming. Um so that's the work that we're doing. The town of Silva uh uh has adopted the uh the ordinance by reference in your existing ordinance. So there's nothing today that I need you guys to uh to approve, just an understanding that we are continuing to do that work within the town Silva and uh can certainly answer any questions for the board if there are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move this on to a highlight this day for me anyway, and many, 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 many folks in our community who are very, very proud of the young man that was born and raised here. And uh and his mom's family here for many generations as well. And I would like to call Ms. Steph forward. Uh we're going to make a presentation. This page, or I'm sorry, oh. Uh Ms. Mary is going to read the proclamation. And this is to our hometown hero. It's Cal Raleigh. I'd like both of them to come forward.
Recognition of winning the Major League Baseball Home Run Derby and declaring July fourteenth, twenty twenty five as the Cal Raleigh Day. Whereas the town of Silva Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Jackson County native Cal Raleigh, who has risen to national prominence as a professional baseball player and catcher for the Seattle Mariners, bringing pride and recognition to the town of Silva and Jackson County for his achievement on the field. And whereas Cal's journey from the ball fields of Jackson County to the major leagues is a testament to his talent, perseverance, and the strong community values that have shaped him. And whereas Raleigh has etched his name into baseball history as a collective performer, notably with his iconic walk off home run in twenty twenty two, earning admiration from fans from across the country. And whereas on July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, Cal Raleigh became the first catcher and switch hitter ever to win the M L B Home Run Derby with an electrifying performance of fifty-four total home runs, making history and inspiring fans across the country. And whereas his victory, accomplished with his father pitching, brother catching, was not only a testament to athletic ability, the celebration of family immunity in North Carolina pride. And whereas known for his strength, perseverance, and leadership behind the plate, Cal Raleigh has become a fan favorite for his athletic excellence, hardworking nature, uplifting spirit he brings to the game. And whereas Cal's continued success inspires young athletes throughout Jackson County and beyond to dream big, stay determined, and take pride in their roots. And now therefore be it hereby proclaimed that the town of Silva Board of Commissioners do hereby declare July fourteenth, twenty twenty five as the Cal Raleigh Day in the town of Silva and call upon our citizens to recognize and celebrate this historic achievement by a hometown hero. Opened this day, the twenty fourth of July, twenty twenty five.
Congratulations. Now, we have uh we have a little business to tend to with this, but we also have another proclamation that mentions cap. And we would like to present that to y'all as well, case the other recipients that are that are mentioned there. So I'm very is gonna leave that proclamation as well, and then we'll go back and approve.
Proclamation of the town of Silva Board of Commissioners honoring the town of Silva for its contribution to Major League Baseball. Whereas the town of Silva, North Carolina, nestled in the heart of the great Smoky Mountains, has long been a community that values hard work, perseverance, and the pursuit of excellence. And whereas Jackson County has produced multiple individuals who have reached the highest level of professional baseball, leaving a lasting legacy in Major League Team Forty Six, played eleven seasons in the M L B as a catcher for five teams, including the Baltimore Orioles, New York Yankees, known for his defensive prowess. Oates later became a celebrated manager, leading the Texas Rangers to three American League West titles and earning America League Manager of the Year in nineteen ninety six. He is honored in both the Texas Rangers and Baltimore Orioles Hall of Fame and whereas Cal uh Cal Raleigh, a graduate of Smoky Mountain High School, has emerged as an M L B premier catcher. A switch hitter for the Seattle Mariners, Raleigh became the first catcher in M L B history to hit ninety-three home runs in his first four seasons, won both the Gold Glow and the Platinum Glow awards in twenty twenty four and was named an All-Star and Home Run Derby Champion in twenty twenty five. And whereas Sammy Matthews, also a Smoky Mountain High School alumnus, made his M L B debut with the Minnesota Twins on August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, delivering an impressive performance with five strikeouts and no walks over five innings. A product of Western Carolina University, Matthews represented the next generation of Silva's baseball excellence. And whereas these athletes have not only represented the community on the national stage, but have also served as role models for young people in our community, demonstrating that with dedication and determination, even the lawthliest goals are within reach. And now therefore be it resolved that the town of Silva Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize and celebrate the community's proud legacy of producing Major League Baseball talent and encourages community sport for youth sports and community pride, adopted this day, the twenty fourth of July, twenty twenty five.
Congratulations. The newspapers?
Yep.
And you want the whole board to ban this picture? On our favor. Let's do that. Let's get a little more rammed down. It's like a picture for the newspaper.
One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so for a bit here of a business fact, I would entertain a motion that would improve line item full steam being the proclamation declaring Cal Raleigh Day. Make that motion. We have a lot. Do we have any discussion? I'll favor raise hands up.
Aye.
I'll vote my last sign of the most carries. And without going down motion that would prove the proclamation, the celebration of Major League Baseball. I'll make that. We have that motion, but we have any discussion. I'll favor raise hands up.
Aye.
I will vote my last sign of the most carries. Uh the next line is uh the lease on the community table. Does that confirm that thing?
Yes, the the community table lease is renewed every five years. Um when I would hold the file to look to see the last time a repair was made, I realized it should have been done in July of twenty twenty three. So the lease before you is effective today, but covers May twenty three to twenty twenty eight.
Okay, so we need to approve the list during.
Yes.
But if that motion, if we do that. Have a motion. We have any discussions.
Can you set the dates again, Dave?
Twenty twenty uh July first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
And you know, if anybody needs any clarification, I'll tell you what I think I know about this. Uh we lease this building to them for a dollar a year. It's gotta help our community. Uh and if at any point in time we they agree that still here, or we came up with a better place for that, we can release this agreement within sixty days at any time on Tuesday. But for a fact. So uh do we have a motion to approve? I don't know. We have any more discussion. I'll favor raise hands up. I'll vote my last sign of the motion carries. So any kind of motion that we approve, a special event request for a private wedding, have all service at Bridge Park. You have a motion, do we have any discussion? I'll favor raise hands up.
Aye.
I'll vote my last sign of the motion carries. And the one thing that's been added to our agenda is uh the resolution to stand in support of the F R L continuing without our public library as regulation council council commissioners. I would like everybody to read that. Everybody's saying the way it was changed, uh John Lee, everything you like that, like that. But all right, so I didn't kind of motion that we approved of that. There's a motion. Do we have any discussion? I'll favor raise your hands up.
Aye.
voted. Okay. So motion carries. And uh that is the everything on our agenda for fact. So unless there's something I'm missing, uh I've got a time to post it with John.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion. You have any discussion? I'll favor raise hands up.
Aye.
I'll vote my last sign. Stand the jar.